You guys ready? Are you guys ready? You all set on it? Okay, everybody, we're. We're gonna get started. Like to welcome everybody to the April fourth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of the Lyman Board of Selectmen. This meeting is a public proceeding and is being recorded. The agenda is subject to change without notice. Would you join me in the pleasure of leaving? Okay, we're gonna start with the public input. Anybody would like to have up to five minutes to have some input to the board? You're welcome to speak. Okay, Sue.
Um, Sue Briggs, six twenty-one, South Water Borough. We took kind of an informal poll about what this sign enclosure is supposed to be. Dave was kind enough to email me back for sort of ideas about a bell, maybe do something with the church, whatever. So, um, but we had a good response to doing some kind of a design contest. I think there was, I should have looked tonight, but there was somewhere in the range of twenty to thirty people that said yes to a design contest, and there were about six people who said no. And basically, the reason they said no was they didn't want to put any more money into the falling of the sign, which looks like the devil over there. So anyways, we're just presenting it to the board to see what we can do to have some kind of legitimate design be prepared to send out the RFP again, because obviously you got one bid for twenty-five thousand something, which seems a little excessive to this already growing budget on a ten thousand dollar sign as now, who knows? But I think with a little bit of, you know, input from, you know, anybody who wanted to put a design in, we've got lots of people in this town who are artists, engineers, architects, whatever, builders, who know what they're looking at to judge these things and maybe come up with a consensus of what we want this thing to look like, rather than just A-frame structure with vinyl siding. What is that? I don't know. I don't know what, to me, an A-frame looks like one of those camp buildings on Shake On, on two oh two. It doesn't look like something that should be over assigned, and there was no asphalt chingles called for, there was no, you know, any kind of structure. It was just out there. And I, I asked around the offices here last week if there was actually a drawing that could be handed to a bidder, and the answer was no. I looked up several other towns who had RFPs out there in the past four signs. Their RFP was nine pages long. It included all the construction requirements. It includes specifications for the materials. It required a design concept and had a picture of what they wanted. Why didn't we do that? You know, why do we put these RFPs out here with nothing in them? The same thing happened with the sign. You put out an RFP for a sign which basically talked about the working components of a TV screen. You didn't say double sided. You didn't, it was one side. We got two. There was no base board included thing. I remember the discussion that was here one night about, oh, maybe about five hundred dollars to cook the electrical. How much did it really cost to hook that thing up? What was the budget for that? And I'm asking for an answer in this meeting.
Right now is for the five minutes of input.
Okay.
We're not answering questions.
So anyways, I'd like to propose that we do something with the design contest for the sign enclosure. So that a new RFP can be put back out.
Thank you. Thank, thank you for that. I, I really like you, Andrew.
So.
Simple, simple, simply yes or no. You don't even have to. It would make me very happy if you would move item seven of order to the top under here in allegations, squeeze it in between two and three. Simply because of this whole spare cellphone debacle, and I had a spare cellphone. I mean, it's just, it's some kind of fear cry in that there. So I'd like to hear that. And I don't quite know how long I'm going to be here. I don't think I'll get, I'm asking it. One of you delightful human beings would make a motion to move it up. That's it. Thank you.
I saw Amber.
Yeah, I don't have anything, Amber, so I, um, for myself personally, but Michelle was hoping to make the meeting tonight, and she is stuck on the draw still. So she asked if I would read this letter for her, which I said I would. So to the select board, I would like to start off by making a public apology to Dave Alves. After having a nice conversation with you, I know that you were not aware of the phone call that was made to me, asking me to see things our way or run the page a certain way. I'm sorry if I said anything that called your integrity into question. Please forgive me. Um, and Rusty, I am glad we got to speak after last meeting, and I hope you understand where I was coming from. I also now understand that you do not remember speaking of the executive session, as was reported to me by Bill. John, I thank you for letting me know that I was talking about an executive session when I asked you directly. Bill, I know you are waiting for a call. Right now, I am too angry to speak to you because of something you said at the last meeting, but I just can't wrap my mind around. You like it to be removed from the Facebook page to you live in America, not Russia. Quote, I have heard that the Facebook privacy policy was violated by calling out misinformation. The person posting the false information is still on the Facebook page. I have been blocked from the Lyman Happening's Facebook page for making this misinformation public. I live in Lyman, Maine, USA, not Russia. It is totally unacceptable to live with these kinds kind of destructive actions. I will not participate with anything to do with this Facebook page until the actions change. Did you really think that was an appropriate comparison? You literally compared your freedom to be on a Facebook page to the freedoms of the Ukrainians and what is happening over there. Women and children are dying, and you dare compare that to being removed from a silly Facebook page. The horrible and egregious bill to make that comparison. I question anyone who would make that comparison to be a chair of a board that runs this town. First, Brian Wong, they have stated misinformation or not full information, but where were you correcting it? An easy thing to do, correct misinformation, and that would have also informed the community properly on the page. It was the teaching moment that you threw right out the window. Second of all, it's a private Facebook page, and again, rule number five. Are you above rules or you only enforce and follow the ones you want? An apology to the people of the happening would go a long way. Or do you truly think rules do not apply to you? When you were a police officer, did you enforce the laws, or was it okay for people to break the law if they thought they were justified in doing so? You also ignored my respectful request to have my placement on the ordinance review committee decided that evening and told others you can't speak of what's in the works. Well, what is in the works? Do the other members of the board know what's in the works? You have disrespected an oath that I took to be on that committee. That is my oath, my integrity, my honor, you are disrespecting. What gives you the right? Again, are you above the rules? In talking to me on the phone, you told me you thought it was funny how mad Polly was when she heard our reappointment papers for you to sign. Boy, she was mad. You should have seen her waving that paper, followed by you laughing and saying you told her you'd take it under advisement. Is that the behavior of a chair of a board towards an employee or towards procedures that need to be followed? Tom, Dave, Rusty, John, I ask you gentlemen, are these actions and statements okay with you, coming from the board? I implore, no beg, you gentlemen, please speak up and stand up for what is right, true, honest, and fair for all Lyman residents. As you're hearing these things that are being done and said by one of our, your members of the board, hold them accountable. Speaking up is not always easy thing to do, but it's the right thing to do. As for this whole, we can't talk to you in women's public comments and can't have back and forth with the members of the audience. Then why are the meetings open? People want answers and deserve answers. The way it's being run now, it's like everything has to be run past a lawyer to speak to members of the public during a meeting. Why don't we just hire one to be at every meeting so people can actually get answers in a timely manner? Versus the we'll get back to you that we always hear, and then they're never gotten back to until they're, till they get angry and come in here upset or take to Facebook to them. Tom, I truly love what you said at the last meeting. Quote, decisions of the board may not be, may not make everybody happy all the time. However, if we were working as a fully united team, we can accomplish so much more than we are currently. Case in point, creating an updated policy and procedures such as board code of ethics and select board meeting protocols that have not been addressed in years. How do we positively move forward as a select board? I believe we should begin working as a team, developing meeting protocols, creating a board code of ethics, continuing to develop policies and procedure for staff, and continue to foster open communication between the board and staff. I would urge you to add, continue to foster respectful and open communication with the members of the public during and after meetings. Everyone, despite what anyone may personally feel about them or their situation, deserves to be heard and answered in a timely manner. And I truly hope your words I quoted above and developing those protocols help steer the board in a better direction to bring unity and peace to our town. In closing, once again, I respectfully ask you to make a final decision on my appointment to the ordinance review committee. There truly is no reason to delay it any further. Regards, Michelle Falasati.
Thank you, Michelle.
Don.
Yeah, Don Hernan, planning board member. I'm just, I don't have any comments, but I have specific comments at this time, but I noticed that on the agenda, it appears you're going to be considering recommended changes to the zoning ordinance proposed by the planning board. I'm just here in case there's any questions about what the intention of the planning board was when we voted, that we voted unanimously to forward those recommended changes to the select board. And we are under a little bit of a time crunch. We're trying to get those to go to the June election for consideration by the residents. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but it comes appropriate to discuss that issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Don. Anybody else? Yes, Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff DeMers, three oh three, monthly pond. So listening to you a couple of weeks ago in my office, I heard my name probably four times, which is not a problem. That's fine. I'm okay with that. The issue is the truthfulness that went behind the name is the issue that bothers me. Um, in the three examples, I'm going to be brief about them. So the whole statement that was made to Mr. Tibbets and his friend, yeah, John and I did have a friendship. Let's say we did. Our friendship's been very rough lately. A lot of issues with our friendship. We served on, went together as I was the chair in sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. And about two thousand twenty, and I think around March or April, sorry, my dates might be a little bit off. I go into Goodwin's Mill store. And I'm sorry, it was around April, May, June, we had Senator DeShu, DeShambo come in along with Fecto. They sat with the planning board, they sat with the, the select board. We were told what was going to happen with the marijuana being legalized and what it was going to come into the town line. They're going to come in, they're going to buy up your property, your ordinance is going to be weak, and they're going to put facilities in your town that could be ready. That's when I was sitting on the board. Mr. Tibbets knew that we had an issue that we seriously had to look at. Um, some of the offices within the town hall knew the issues that we really had to look at. I turned it a lot. Around August, September, October, I go into Goodwin's Mill store. Hey, quite a facility going behind your home, huh? What are you talking about? Oh, marijuana plant? Um, Dave Bell, select board member, nothing against you there. Proposing it? I have no clue what you're talking about. I leave, get in my truck. Do you remember the phone call? What did I get for an answer?
I don't know.
I don't know, is what I get from the chair. I don't know. What do you mean you don't know? I don't know what you're talking about. I'll call you back. Five minutes later, I get a call back. Yeah, there was a site review walk, and that is a plan for the tiny hole. Really? If you don't think that tarnished the relationship that that gentleman and I had, you're crazy. He has nothing to do with Sue that's going on. That's between me and thirteen of our homeowners in that area. It has nothing to do with John Tibbets. So please get your facts straight, Mr. Stevens. You want to say the rest of the story, Paul Hough? I'll tell you the rest of the story. The other thing about personnel files, I was the chair of the select board. I was around since thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. I was very privy to all the information in personnel files. I did the yearly reviews that came up earlier. We sacked all the employees. We did the reviews. We knew where the employees stood. We worked on them issues. We tried very hard for the employees' life. And I think we did a pretty damn good job. We followed protocols. I'm a protocol person. I do protocols every day, and we follow them hard. They've been laughs ever since that gentleman got off the chair. See, I see nothing but arguing, fighting, can't get along with nobody, not welcome in town hall. I got a registered letter saying I wasn't welcome in town hall. Be truthful. Know the facts. I knew what was in the personnel file. I never got any information from them. I don't need information from them. I can get my own information. You'll never be a Paul Hough. The only one you'll be is a Pinocchio. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Brian.
Brian, do you want? There seems to be some misunderstanding of what I quoted on the infamous Facebook post. Uh, I was quoting the comprehensive plan. I was not quoting anything other than that, and the words that you added to my quote are not in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else?
I want to keep this short, so I'll only address a few items that came up at the last selectmen's meeting. First, Ms. Sampson said she thought my comment about the lack of courage displayed by the members of this board was slanderous. I respectfully disagree and intend to explain why. Second, the chair said my accusations deserved a response from this board. Instead, three selectmen personally attacked me in an attempt to discredit me and not respond to any of the real issues I've been talking about for months. Really responding to these issues would have taken courage. I will address some of the more misleading statements in their speeches. After months of pressure to resign, I did say, if you want me to resign, pay me the balance of my term at ten thousand dollars. You'll never hear from me again. I felt defeated. I just wanted to lead public service, and my personal finances relied on my select, selectmen stipend for the next two years. Now I'm glad I didn't resign because the CEO and I are in a good place now when we speak regularly. I've also learned more about what makes a good selectman. The chair falsely blamed me for legal spending being over budget. I never voted for spending about seven thousand dollars on lawyers to investigate me. I also never agreed to and don't believe there was ever a vote to pay the town attorney another three thousand to review all my FOIA requests. Ten months later, I'm still waiting for many documents. On another note, I am not paddy to the legal action against the zoning board appeals. Again, no selectmen saw fit to correct these false statements. That would have taken courage. I cannot talk about the actions that former assess them, assess them. I can only say the entire select board agreed he needed to be paid his two weeks and leave the town hall immediately. This was a unanimous decision, unanimous decision that Bill and Rusty were part of, a fact that would have taken courage to bring up. The CEO did not accuse me of sexual harassment. The former treasurer did. It was investigated thoroughly, and I was unanimously judged to be innocent. Again, the entire board, including Bill and Rusty, were in agreement that that charge is not credible. Courage is not needed to engage in wild rooms, speculation, and cheap shots. Correcting it takes courage. I spoke with the town clerk many times before the vote to make the town clerk and road commissioner positions appointed instead of elected. Both Bill and Rusty know this. They were a part of the board that voted in favor of the change. The townspeople voted by a majority of three to one for the change. Both Bill and Rusty lacked the will and courage to set the record straight at the last meeting. All my minority reports, I have explained why I voted against the majority and raised real concerns having to do with lack of courtesy, integrity, truth, and transparency. Insulting townspeople, stacking a committee, withholding documents, talking about people in executive sessions without their knowledge. And most recently, we learned soliciting a favor and change for a committee assignment. I've also cited violations of the town charter employment policy and main laws. It takes courage to explain yourselves to the people who elected you to office. I think the townspeople should require it. If you have any questions or comments, please call me. I will listen and talk with you. Six five one nine two four seven.
Thank you, John. You're welcome. Yes.
I never said you didn't have courage. I said you addressed somewhat it, called it down a coward.
Well.
Excuse me, I'm not asking for a response. Thank you. Um, I do feel like we spend a lot of time, town resources, town time, dealing with what seems like your personal grievances against a lot of people, and I just feel like I'm not getting stuff done, and the town is, it's this every single time. I'm just wondering, wondering why. But you did ask for, to be paid for two years for a job that you wanted to do. I'm not sure what word to place on that. Thank you.
Any other input? Okay, we're going to move on to the mail.
Uh, can I, can I, Mr. Joe? Hi, Michelle.
Go ahead.
While Michelle is here, I want to know when we talked about Michelle in executive session. Did we talk about Michelle in executive session?
No.
I personally, I do not know.
I do not recall, or I don't know why we wouldn't, but.
Bill?
Rusty?
John, can you tell us when her name was mentioned?
I'd like Michelle to tell you who told her her name was mentioned.
Bill called me, told me I was mentioned. He told me the three that were against me in that room. You told me at the moment.
But it wasn't an executive session.
You told me it was an executive session.
Sorry.
You can agree to disagree, but you did. But that's.
Okay, so, so it wasn't an executive session, we remember correctly, but we, but we have, for mentioning the name anyway, we apologize.
How would I know if it was named executive session? But if I'm told it's executive session, that was said, because then I did, I asked you, I asked Tom and Rusty, and John, I came to you afterwards separately and asked you.
There was a mention in passing.
And it was about the Facebook page and about something I posted. And that's for itself. And I'm, I'm, talk to me about the page whenever you want. And I, you were going, I did, thank you. So I was, I was, if not, I, but that's what I was told. I would not make that up because how would I know?
You're okay with it?
I'm, I'm good as long as I'm not. Great. Did you get my apology?
I, I get that. Thank you very much.
There's a piece of mail from the SMPDC, which is some kind of general assembly, assembly. I'm not sure what it is. Oh, okay. Community planner and outreach, Southern Maine Planning and Development. You're welcome to read it. It's online for you to read. Charter Communication Spectrum. They're changing some of the channel. Again, it's posted online for everybody to read. Again, there's a York.
Right. Before you move on to that piece, does that letter from Spectrum also inform you that they are raising broadband rates by ten dollars a month?
No, it does not. Nope. Not there. No, it's about Black News Channel. So we did get, um, we, a couple of meetings ago, we had Shelley Schellin back from Spectrum here, Wichita back, I'm sorry. And, uh, that they wanted to renegotiate our contract and that we could have the, uh, public viewing channel. And then when Mr. Vigyu was here to talk about negotiating with them for their contract, we found out that they were going to take that five percent the town could charge if we wanted to, and they were going to charge the five percent for the viewing channel. And Mr. Vigyu says we can get it for free, but not to pay the price. It's not worth it. So we're still dealing with that whole issue with Spectrum and Charter. The York County Budget Committee has a letter here about the budgets. Everyone's free to read this. It's online. Letter from Sue on the sign. There's a letter also, is this online also from the attorney? Don?
Yes.
Okay, there's a letter to John Tibbets from the town attorney that you're all free to read online. So if we go into complaints, I don't have anything new in complaints here. Unless anybody has anything, any complaints. All right. So then we'll go to the minutes of the March seventh meeting. Okay, go ahead.
I have a complaint that a thumb drive was containing emails from your account, Town Line. As we discuss these consistent emails, to which you already have access in your capacity as selected on the line, these records have not been screened to determine whether documents are public record under the main Freedom of Access Act. You just said you didn't get it.
I've taken, it's taken me ten months to get that much data.
But do you have it now?
That's, that's not all of it. That's just a portion of the request.
So.
And those, those were, those were emails that were addressed to me. I didn't have a laptop at the time. They were with a different tech guy. So I had no way to go back and get them.
But do you understand why I say the things that I say and I put out there? Like, you know, the, 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 the statements that plausible deniability? It's taken you seven and a half years to open up your, your laptop. And now it's at the legal, the legal end.
For the first six, six years.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to make it a discussion. I just wanted to bring it up.
So you want to throw an accusation?
No, 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 it's not an accusation. It's right here.
It's exactly.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The first six years, I didn't feel I needed to. We didn't communicate.
Plausible deniability. That's what you told me.
I did not. I never.
Okay.
So you do have a laptop now?
Yes, I've got the Chromebook. You made sure.
The one that was assigned to you went to Nancy because you wouldn't use it, correct?
The one that was assigned to me, we had a lot of difficulty with. And we couldn't get it to work, and it was under the, it was, it was with the tech guy before. I couldn't make it work. It went back. And then when Nancy got here, I didn't feel I needed one.
March seventh minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, so the minutes, most has been made in seconded to accept the minutes of March seventh. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor? Five to zero. Thank you. March twenty first. I make a motion to accept. Any discussion on the minutes from the twenty first? All those in favor? Are you ready, John?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Or all those opposed? One, John opposed.
Why are you opposed, John?
Because we don't have all the attachments. It's incomplete.
Okay, then say that.
We don't have all the applicable attachments. It's incomplete.
Who you missing?
One person did more than he said. Oh, I think I missed yours. Leashat.
I, from what I understand, I come out pretty clearly because it was less than one.
It's nothing to do with not being attached to the minute.
Not just against you.
You're gonna cheap shop me on that. Do they, do they have to be, do they legally have to be attached?
I mean, I don't believe so.
Because they're, because they're recorded.
Right, and they're recorded. I have to put, I mean, of those that don't choose to. And that's what I did with one of them.
What's the, there's terminology for minute. I'm sorry.
If you change the motion, excuse me, I might be able to save some time. If you change the motion to that it's legal to use the recorder, I'm fine with that. And I vote with you. If it doesn't matter.
Well, we're, we're required to have the audio recording anyway. So that's already there. It's stipulated. It's never been introduced.
Correct. But there's nothing that says that we have to have all, it doesn't even, you don't even have to type out all the minutes. You do, that's a lot of work. You know, it's the motions that you have to record and, and the results. And then there's a statement in there saying, you know, refer to record it. So. I'll. Modify the motion to accept, show up close enough. If you wanna read, if it makes any difference, I'll vote with you. So we don't have to run after leash ads and what have you. They're in the right parliamentary mode here.
Go ahead, make a motion.
Vise a motion to accept the minutes as written and the. Information that is not included from the statements can be referred to by the video recording.
Okay, all those in favor? Five to zero. Thank you. Counts payable warrant number forty seven for the year two thousand twenty-two in the amount of five hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. Rusty seconds. Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor? Five to zero. Thank you. And we have the payroll warrant number forty-eight in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and five dollars and twenty-three cents. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five to zero. Thank you.
So it's gonna be here. We're, we're cruising pretty good here. Okay. How much time are you?
Okay. I'm trying to coordinate with my spouse's schedule and my mega.
Okay, okay. Unfinished business on charter communications. We posted the address list the charter gave us that everybody should have connectivity to the internet for a normal hookup, not an expensive one, but a normal hookup. And we've had people call in to say they're not on the list, so we're adding that to the list and that'll be going back to them to make sure they're all included. So if you know anyone that, that can't get hooked up on a normal hookup, they need to call us and let us know. We need to know that information. All right, Goodenham's Mill Cemetery. Continuing to get calls for burials and plots. Looking for information from the cemetery.
There's talks about reorganization. There's talks about hiring and attorney and reorganization. Bill Harris is your go-to guy. The one that you're making reference to, Amos did sell lots. Amos did take care of it, facilitate people. But everybody keeps sending people to Amos. Amos wants nothing to do with it. Bill Harris is the guy. Send people to Bill Harris, not Amos.
I don't know where that discussion was, but we were, we were told to stay away from Bill Harris.
Who told you that?
I don't think so.
You said that you didn't, you would go with. You would go, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You said you would go carefully because you did not wanna ruin a long relationship with them. And this was very sensitive. So, because I, I spoke with Peggy McDonald in regards to the. Excuse me.
Chadmore.
To the Chadmore about when we had that discussion a couple of meetings ago. And she, you know, she said their association is only big enough to take care of Chadmore. And they, they could not bring anymore on. She told me about the association over here. She explained it to, she thought it was an easy thing. She goes, let me check into it. When she talked to Amos and she goes, whoa, whoa, this is a, this is a big mess. And she said, and Amos agreed they needed to get into attorney. So it sounds like.
No, we're, we're.
Somebody needs to get in.
We're moving at a snail's pace, but it's moving. There's talks of reorganizing. There's talks of reappointing officers. There's, the talks are happening.
Good.
Which for two and a half years, there were no talks. It was like crickets.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I would have gone and talked to Bill Harris myself, but the meetings that we had, the type of conversations that was, that was a no-fly zone. Do not go speak to him.
Well, so Amos wants nothing to do with the cemetery. So if you've got somebody who's calling the town, asking for a burial law, you send them to Bill Harris. Bill Harris has the books. He has the maps. He has the lots. He has all of it.
Wow.
He's got the deeds. Bill doesn't want nothing to do with it. So the more people that bug Bill about this, the easier this transition's going to be done.
Are you part of the transition?
I would like to be, but I don't know.
Okay, then who is leading the way to make this transition into a new association?
So there's me, there's Amos, who wants to see it get reorganized, but Amos wants the backseat. He does not want. He wants the silent party. Amos is a wealth of knowledge, but he doesn't wanna do it.
Okay, I'm just, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to understand on how this can move forward if it's you, you.
Well, it's, as far as this town goes, it's me and a couple, two officers and the treasurer. That's all it is for this committee. That's all it is for that cemetery. I just got a letter today from Amos because Amos is thorough. He wants to make sure everything's in writing.
Okay.
But things aren't moving.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Okay, Oscar Littlefield Road update. Still waiting to hear back from Brad as to what's left. Brad is our attorney for contacts there, and I have not heard that. Sign enclosure and RFPs for the transfer station. Any decision made? No. Ordinance review applications previously received. They're all on hold till we even see if we have a hiring committee that's willing to talk to anybody. Tony Vigyu, franchise agreement liaison.
So let's back it up.
All right.
One minute review.
Yes.
Missed the Tibbetts. And then, you know, pardon me if I got it wrong, but I wasn't here. You so eloquently put it. Mention that as contractors, we have some sort of conflict. So I would like that resolved before we do anything. So. I'd like to make a motion that we talk to town council. We give him John's recommendation, all the paperwork that John read, and we get a decision from him.
Can you remind me? There was a lot of stuff lying that night.
So that was, it didn't have anything to do with you because you're not a contractor.
I, I build decks, so I can't.
We can't, we can't vote on the ordinance committee. Things of that nature. So I wanna bring that to clarification by town council.
Yeah, good. That.
Yeah, I don't want shadows to me.
And I need a second.
Okay, any more discussion on the issue?
No, I wish I had it in front of me so I could call it.
All those.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
All those in favor are going to the town attorney? Five to zero. Thank you. I didn't mean to rush by you there.
Well, it's.
Trying to get.
Glaring at us, the ordinance review. You know. I'm sorry. If I'm being told I can't even vote, then, then what am I doing?
Yeah, but this was pre all that too, though. I mean, it just.
We have a bunch of applications.
That I, I. I didn't. I did not do that piece of you, but I do want clarification. Because if he has a point, then he has a point, but I don't think he has.
I'm starting to remember that. I think the, the, the big point I had was we've never not used the hiring committee's recommendation on anything. I can't remember a time. The hiring committee recommended.
We're just starting to use the hiring committee for committees and we, I, we discussed that and we, we did it because we thought it was the right thing to do only to get slammed far. So if you brought out a, an issue or a potential issue, I say we get it resolved.
I'm fine with that.
And we move on.
And I just, I was just trying to remember why I brought that out. Now, that was the whole point of it. But we got good precedent using the hiring committee for people we hire for everything other than committees.
But the conflict would have been avoided had you were taking the hiring committee's recommendations.
Not really.
Why?
Not really. If it's a conflict, it's a conflict.
Conflict amongst you guys.
There is no conflict, Leo.
Hypothetically, there is. Let's just say that.
Say, say again. I didn't hear that.
I said hypothetically, let's say that there is. But I'm saying, had you guys have gone with the hiring committee's. Recommendations, I don't think we'd be in this situation right here today. I mean, that's what we put the hiring committee in place for, was to bet these people to make their recommendations. And then to take the board and say, yep, no, no. To me, that's just, what are they doing there? What are they, why are they there? Why do you put it there if you're gonna be counterproductive to them?
Well, why don't we get a ruling or, or an opinion? And then we'll take it out of the. The committee, of the hiring committee's hands and we'll put it back into the selectants' hands. And we'll go that way.
Well, in a sense, that's what you did.
That's what you did. Well.
Because the hiring committee was asking to do a task.
Let, let, let me ask you a question. I don't wanna belabor this at all tonight because this isn't the time or place. We know information in regards to that that has to be taken into consideration that the hiring committee was not privy to. And they weren't privy to it because we didn't wanna slant their input. So I know that sounds like gobbledygook, but. There, there's more to it than meets the eye. And eventually then we'll probably discuss it and it'll all come out and you'll understand where it's coming from. But at this point, we, we need to just find out where we are and try to move on.
And that's the reason why my FOIA came out, just so I can clear it off and I'll be done. Cause I wanna be done. I wanna be done with the town line. Believe me, I'm tired. I am. I'm, I'm tired. I am. But that's why the FOIA come out because I have six great people that live in this town that put out applications to be in. And I had pretty information of sitting on the board and I'm saying to myself, why would these people be fine? I have to find out. I gotta do it.
Okay.
I know you don't wanna hear it, though, but it's the truth.
I'm not, I'm not here to discuss it at this time. All right. All right, the Tony Vigyu franchise agreement liaison. We have two invoices and an email in your packets. And after he came and explained what was going on and what he was doing, I think he answered everybody's questions. So we're looking for a motion to pay these two invoices. To, to Tony Vigyu. Rusty seconded it. John made the motion. Is there any more discussion on it? All those in favor? Thank you. Five to zero. Thank you. The treasurer's report is in our packets and it's also, should be on the town website. So that should be all set. Okay, Priscilla, spare cellphone assignment.
It's a spare cellphone. Why is there a spare cellphone? I thought I had and lost.
You lost your telephone, fellas? You did it, Priscilla?
Oh, stop it.
All right. So do you really want me to explain it? You want me to explain it?
I, I see down here at the bottom, which kinda shook me up, but so the select board clerk has tendered a resignation, right?
What's that got to do with it?
Because she gets the phone calls from. General assistants. So people will call and say, blah, blah. She calls me, I'm good. I'm, I'm on it.
Yeah.
Okay, but there was a level of confidentiality that I really freaked out about, okay? And she's doing a great job, but now we're gonna have a whole new body in there. Do you know what I mean?
No, no.
I just, I would rather. I guess I don't know how to facilitate contacting people, making inquiries of our general assistants. And take the middleman out. I don't know how to do that.
Well, currently, we have a phone in the selectman's office.
Right.
For general assistance.
Right.
If you need to make phone calls, I know Donna is happy to leave you to yourself for a few minutes to make the calls. I mean, I can explain how this all came about if you really want. I mean, I can explain how this all came about if you really want.
No, I don't, I, I don't, I don't.
I would rather not.
Okay.
So, yes, we have a spare cellphone and we need to decide what to do.
Okay, so I guess my.
I shouldn't say we have a spare. We have a cellphone not being used. It's not a spare. It's not being used.
So. Donna will show me where the GA phone is.
Yes.
And I may not go on call.
Yes.
Not my issue. That's me and I'm going off confidentiality. When you do the reverse, however, and Donna, albeit all whomever, is picking up those calls, now you have a middleman where confidentiality is kind of great. You see?
I do.
That's all I'm concerned about.
Okay.
All right. I don't have an answer.
Trust on.
Just on.
I think, yeah.
Why wouldn't you trust the next person coming?
I don't know the next person.
I know, but I mean.
And it's not about that. It's about the fact that the law says that this is supposed to be confidential. That my files are supposed to be locked, which I believe they are whenever Donna leaves that office, locked, huh? So, and it all comes back to, I mean, I can go on and on about this, but it all comes back to the fact that I don't have a corner of my own, which is, I got a corner of her office, but.
Have you talked to the building committee?
About building.
About an office, yeah. Their working plans are on the back wall, some.
Are they renovating this space?
Proposal for expanding the town hall. There's some ideas, concepts, nothing hard and fast, but there's, there's discussions. So if you think you need an office and you should have a private place, you need to talk with them.
Just need, just need a closet.
Okay, so. In the way I'm understanding, with your confidentiality, you're the middle person.
Right.
It doesn't matter if it's Donna or the next person. You'd rather not have that middle person is what you're ultimately saying. Or, or getting, or getting the messages or taking the messages?
Taking the message.
It's taking the messages and.
It's the taking the messages because you make the return calls. It's the in-between person taking the message.
But they have no idea what they're calling it. So they're just saying we'd like to speak to somebody in the general assistance.
Donna, Priscilla, you take the spare cellphone and when it comes in.
I have, I have a spare one.
Right, but you take that cellphone and when the call comes in, it comes into that phone.
All right.
I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take this one. So we don't take up the time.
Yeah.
You and I need to get together. You, Rusty, and I need to get together. And we'll figure this out, especially with Donna's situation coming up here. We'll, we'll get it taken care of.
I want to know how many support drills you got. I think it's three already.
Oh, what?
That would be like you get three phones. What does that like?
I, 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 I think I get two. I counted two, so, yeah, we'll, we'll take. We'll make this work.
And, and about, you know, requesting an office, by the time you were renovations, that house would be dead. So.
We'll work that out. No. I couldn't take it. Okay, continue on.
All right, all right. So we're not gonna do anything with a spare cellphone at this point.
No, we will take this offline.
All right, all right.
And.
Okay, so we need to go out for bids for propane for the next year, so I just need the board to authorize to go out the bid so we can get that done. All right.
Vote on it?
Sure, why don't we?
Let me go see, we go out to bid for propane for the next season.
Okay, any discussion on that? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. I hate to say this. Is there some kind of resignation here I'm supposed to have? Okay, so Donna is giving her notice. And you're working till April thirteenth at noon. Okay. So I guess we need to vote to accept the resignation, make a motion and.
Make a motion to accept the resignation.
In a second. Okay, Rusty seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? I deserve, thank you very.
Make a motion to advertise for the open. I'm sorry.
Second for that. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
I have discussion about that. So is that something I'm gonna do? Am I gonna like post my own job?
To train, train.
Yeah. It's, yeah. We're voting on posting. Ready to vote. All those in favor of posting?
Posting it. I got a discussion. Should, should we just quick look at the job description, make sure it's still current?
It's within a year.
Is it?
Yes. As a matter of fact, one of the things we're gonna talk with our IT guys to get all the job description posted online. So anybody can refer to it.
Other forms online.
What's that?
Other forms online.
Applications are online, yes. Yes. So I'm still looking for a vote to go to advertise. All those in favor? Five to zero, thank you.
Can I ask a side question? Do employees get exit interviews on leaving? Does the board do that at all?
We tried to do that, yes.
Agreed.
I agree. Okay. Says here we have a proposed warrant article from the planning board. And I have not even had a chance to read it. I just got it.
Okay, so. I haven't seen it either, but. Now I'm. So we go back and forth about ordinance reviewing. I put out a proposal to the charter commission about procedure. They don't accept it, right, so. Didn't belong in charter. A charter member brought it to the planning board where they said they weren't gonna do ordinance review. And we have ordinance review. So is the planning board doing the ordinance review? Or is an ordinance review committee doing the review? That's my question.
There's a chart. In some of our documents, there is a chart of who's responsible for what. And the ordinance review committee is responsible to propose changes to throwing. They're responsible. Nobody else is. That's why there's such a big discussion lately about who's on this ordinance review committee.
But, but I have some from the planning board, not the ordinance review committee. That's what I'm saying. This is what I, I propose. I propose that they did do the ordinance review because it just, it made sense for the, for the plan, to me, it made sense for the planning board to do it with the CEO and the fire chief. You know?
That has to be voted on by the town.
It was never even a proposal. It went to the, it went to the charter commission. And then it got proposed to the planning board without even having a discussion with the selectmen. I didn't, I didn't get that far. I went straight to the planning board. So now I have changes, so I say we table this and.
We have one other input. Don?
Yeah, Donna, her and a current member of the planning board. The Ryman zoning ordinance in section one point eight amendment, amendment procedures states, one point eight, one initial petition. Amendment may be initiated by a majority vote at the Ryman Planning Board. Majority vote of the board of selecting or by a petition of at least ten percent of the votes cast in the last gubernatorial election in the town. I assume that refers to petition would be by residents. And then it says this ordinance may be amended by a majority vote of the town meeting. And it goes on for some other requirements.
Right, but if you read it in the charter, the charter does not say the planning board, the, the, the town.
Saying that the current zoning ordinance, which was approved by town residents and is the current document for the ordinance states that the planning board can propose an amendment by majority vote. We voted five to nothing to propose these changes, which affects some things that have been, that we think need to be changed and we did discuss whether we maybe, we want, yeah, we are pushing a little bit. We're trying to go to June because I think the requirements, and this is my opinion, I'm not speaking, and I'm not authorized to speak for the whole planning board. But we did vote five to zero to propose these amendments. So there's, there's absolutely no reason, as stated in this current ordinance that's approved by town that we cannot propose these amendments, so we have done so.
So what do you think would take precedence, the town ordinance or the charter?
I'm not sure where in the charter.
The charter specifically says ordinance review. It does not say planning board.
I don't know if it says only ordinance review. I think we have to go back to charter and.
And you're talking the current town charter, right? What's that? No, let's say.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I did not memorize it.
Is there a possibility it goes from the planning to you and it's done and there's no.
It has to go through this board, yes.
But then there's no public.
No, there's, there's a public hearing.
There's a public hearing.
My, 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 my question, my question was, I thought, I thought we had a good procedure moving forward. But it was gonna be discussed, further discussed with the charter. I was gonna discuss it with the select board, which had never made it. We went right to the planning board and that's.
Mr. Chairman, I, all I can say is if you look at the front page of the Ryman zoning ordinance, you'll see the number of times it's been modified since, I mean, there's a bunch of times. And it didn't go through any charter commission, but to go to have those amendments approved by the town.
Right, which, which was exactly why I put procedure or tried to propose a procedure that it would make it a little bit harder and to put out to a lot more people so that more people can get involved and understand what the changes are, not to, not to make a change. I mean, this is, I'm a selectman and this is the first time I'm seeing. So, so I'm supposed to say, and I'm not for it, I'm, I'm not against it, you know? But why are we rushing these things through? We, we, I thought we had a great discussion at the charter commission in regards to always putting it on the gubernatorial in November. So more people in town understand what's going on. And here we are, we're doing it again.
Well, I'm not against that, that idea to go to November, but I'm just saying that there this, I mean, this particular, these changes we propose now are to correct some deficiencies and also that they try to put some restrictions on contract zoning, which has turned into a major issue in town here. And I think, and I voted for the, for the contract zoning wording that's in the current Ryman zoning ordinance. And that, and I, as a member of the planning board, and also as a resident, I voted for that. However, Tom, there's some words in there that point further review, leave it open to anything the almost want to do. So that's why we had a big discussion and the, uh, planning board voted against the last contract zoning request. The applicant pulled it, which is, I think, very good, actually. But there's, there's a, I wouldn't call it a loophole, but I think there's a significant deficiency in there that needs to be plugged. And it's up to the select board, I guess, if you don't want it to go to the, to the June, then we are under a bit of a time constraint because I know the town clerk has to have the wording, et cetera, by a certain date coming up pretty quickly. And I'm just saying, the planning board has no particular axe to grind. We're trying to, if we can, correct some deficiencies that, and there's, there's many others, but again, there has been no ordinance review committee that has been operational for quite a long time. And that's why any changes have been typically proposed by either the code enforcement officer that they've gone through the planning board per the, per the zoning ordinance to then go to the select board to be presented to the town residents for voting. So when I kind of vote pass, well, I mean, I'm sorry, that's a little rushed. But there's some deficiencies here that we honestly think should be, and again, this is my opinion based on the five to zero vote. I'm not speaking directly for the planning board because I'm not, we did not vote to have me come and speak. I just came because I thought this might come up and I'm glad I came, so. You know, you don't have to vote with the way you want to vote, but that's it.
Well, look, if I may, just for a second here, to go on, so we're hearing from a planning board to make these changes that's gonna affect everybody in town. What have we heard from our people in town? Nothing. I have a problem with that.
We have to have a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Ah, and, and I read that today very carefully. And you know what it says? We have to have at least one public hearing. I didn't realize. I thought we only had to have one hearing. That was it. We can have more than that.
That's fine.
I think we should hear from the people in town. I really do.
So if you, if you, that means you're gonna delay obviously then till November, which is, that's, that's your prerogative, I guess, but. Oh, I'm asking that, I mean, what the planning board is recommending that it be put on the ballot, that doesn't mean it's gonna be passed or failed. But, and there's gonna be a large turnout presumably because there's primaries this year. In June, it's not gonna be, I hope, a hundred people or something. So.
You never know.
You never know.
You never know.
Anyway, I mean, I, I don't think the planning board, I think it's like a accident, right? So we see some issues that have given us problems with the current zoning ordinance. We're trying to fix those and.
And, and I see in the news other towns talking about the same thing and there are proponents of. So, you know, it's like, I'd like to kind of hear from them, what they have to say on, on the contract zoning. They like it. And it's like, why all of a sudden everybody jumping backwards here?
Well, when I jump backwards, you're taking out some wording that is very, very loose.
I think more, more due diligence needs to be done. So, yes, I know Michelle.
Research with some of the ordinance review committees of the towns, they actually eliminated that, you know, playing, there was like two planning board members were allowed on the C to seven on the board to make it fair. So you have the wisdom of the planning board on it with you, but then you had the rest of the public in different walks of life on the ordinance review committees. That's what I found in my research. I just bring it up, I think, one night when we were talking about it. We did choose not to put this strict. This made that mean in that way, but it was like something that we saw and did, it's kind of a good thing that, you know, it does wisdom from one board, but then you have five members, so it's not like the weighted heavier on one side. But I mean, that is something for the ordinance review. I think we get more walks of life ready to.
That's correct. And also, the people on your committee should be from all over town, not one area.
Is that what something like you?
Morris?
Well.
Yeah, I know.
Right, and we had now a new committee. We had, we had, we had cross-sections of all of town, different people that they served on. And that the question I was gonna ask before is, how come none of those people stepped up and, and got reappointed? Does anybody know that answer at all? Probably don't.
Of the older people, Morris only one.
Anyway, we all had public hearings.
You wanted to answer the question? Wait a minute, wait a minute. You wanted an answer. How many people stepped up? One. He's sitting right there. Leo?
Michelle and Amber stepped.
No, 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 no.
No, no, no. They were on the old board.
And, and Liam told us, he, he didn't realize that we were looking for a new committee, didn't realize what happened to the old committee.
Well, I didn't need it till, till I saw that. Then everybody was.
So that the old committee expired by two or three years, so.
Okay, I mean, we all did public hearings. When, when, when you set the ordinance, we discussed, not, not just zoning ordinance, but, uh, I can, and it's, any ordinance can group down. We discussed it and made a recommendation and we held public hearings.
That's good.
We did.
I agree with you.
You know, we always did.
Okay.
And we all didn't agree, and we all disagreed with the selectmen of the planning board. And that's the way it came down when it went to a general vote.
All right, John.
Don didn't mention it, but I believe the trigger point on that one phrase was they sent that, a question of that to MMA and MMA says refer to town attorney. And the town attorney really didn't answer. That's what came out in that public hearing. Am I correct on that, Don?
Yeah, we got some, we got some little words that said, uh, we were talking about the, I think the four words, but not limits to.
Right.
Which will basically would allow a contract. Which will basically would allow a contract zoning approval for any use anywhere in town. Any zone. What, what, what public hearing you returned?
Uh, the second, the second one.
Yeah. And the, the.
It's recorded.
The town attorney said that, uh. He, he wrote something that was. Almost not understandable, at least by myself. And then he said, if, if there's, if there's some ambiguity or something, then the, uh, zoning. The, uh, planning board should seek to amend it the way I remember it, to amend the, uh, zoning ordinance, which is what we're trying to do. So. I mean, I'm not trying to cause a problem. I'm just saying we, we saw some issues. We're trying to fix them. Uh. The ordinance review committee is, is not available to look at these. The procedure says we can propose this. There has to be public hearings and then the town, the town can vote one way or the other. So it's up to the Select Board to decide whether to go forward or not.
No, I, I'm okay. Okay, my turn.
Thanks, Don, for, for your explanation. And I just want to make a statement here that so it doesn't get out on Facebook and around town that we're trying to put up walls. This past week, we've been doing budget workshops. We've, we've been deep in that. I haven't had time to, to read this, okay? And, you know, being, I can still call myself a freshman, so I can still call myself the, the new guy. I look at procedures also. I go by procedures. I've been trying with, with Rusty's help. We've been trying to do something here in the town hall as far as personnel procedures. I talked about the code of, uh, conduct. We've talked about, and Michelle, I was kind of when you were on the ordinance committee, we brought it up. This, this ordinance committee is very volatile and the way it was handled, what may or may not have been the right way. But I took credit for making the recommendation go onto the hiring committee because not knowing you were Amber, you know, we just got two. Um, two, uh, applications and like, okay, we got two applications. What the heck does that mean? And then other, so where do you vet something that? That's very important. Like you said, people ought to know what have some background on, on, uh, on, on the subject. Like, I guess you're proposing. So.
In fairness, we can run for a committee if we voted in without being.
I, I understand that, but we're, but we, but we as selectmen are supposed to be, as we are told by the crowd out here, that we're supposed to look out for the best. Interest of the town. And that's what I'm trying to do is put, and it's not like everybody, come on, anybody can be on a committee, which pretty much can.
I'm willing to go for the hiring committee too.
And I understand that. And I, and so it isn't anything against, it, it, it started off real rough. It started, and we have a whole bunch of, uh, applications now. That we now have enough, uh, 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 applications that we can look at through the hiring committee, if that's the way we're going. Or the way, you know, I haven't seen what he proposed. Haven't seen it. So, yeah, I don't understand why this is, I, I'd rather not have this go through fast. You know, because it's going to affect somebody somewhere along the lines for amendments on, on something. So we're not. Stopping this tonight because of any other reasons, the fact we haven't had time. We haven't had time and we need, we need process.
I, I do want to bring up, and I think it was you just that brought up, um. That if it's going to go to the hiring committee. And if we had certain criteria, that it should be known. It, it should be told.
Really?
So, so, so if we, if we do that. And it goes to them, then there is, then it should be a rubber stamp.
Also, just to.
That's what I'm thinking.
And that's pretty much what's happened.
Questions are answered.
It's pretty much what's happened.
But I will just say, I am absolutely in favor of the screening committee. And having criteria, I also just want to be very clear. We don't want all the background information because that's where you guys.
No, that, but, but the questions that the board might have.
Yeah, but not a rather chance. She just said they're screening. That's what we've essentially been told. So I.
Not necessarily do you have to take.
And that's. And until these last. Ordinance, we have always taken the hiring committee's recommendation, not only to hire, but to not hire.
That's why it just seems so out of context. You see what I'm saying?
I, I do.
Level of transparency that's just not there.
That's, that word is horrible, Leo. None of that's true. None of the, the lack, the lack of transparency is just not true.
Here's the thing, you're on the inside, okay? The rest of us are on the outside, okay? So you have transparency to all of them, okay? The rest of us are left here guessing.
Well, if you don't understand, I think you, you should say, I don't understand.
It's not that I don't understand because I'll go find my own answers. I, I'm not afraid to do that.
That's fine. And you are, you, you have done that and I, and I think you're very qualified doing that. But what I'm saying is you, this is like the fourth or fifth time I've heard you say lack of transparency and it's just not true. It's, it's, it's not true that there are things being hidden and, and not answered.
There are things not being answered. There's things not being.
I, I agree with that. I, I agree with that to a certain extent that whether it's legal or personnel issues or whatever. I'm sure that comes.
But there's never a return. That's where the, that's where that whole transparency work, because there's never a return.
Which is old business, which is what we should be doing on old business. It's answering those things. Absolutely. The problem is, we're always under the gun. We're always fighting back. We're always.
You guys have a hard job. I don't, I, I don't want to take that. I mean, it's not a light position. I know that. I, I condone all of you guys for doing it because clearly you could be doing something better on a Monday night.
Tuesday night, Thursday night, Wednesday night.
Exactly.
Have all seven days a week.
Listen, I, I, I know what you're going for, but on us in the gallery. We just want to be clear. We want to know where we are. You know what I'm saying? It's, it's just. I mean, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but.
No, I, I think this board now knows exactly where you're coming from. And I'm sure we're going to do whatever we can to answer any question.
Which would be greatly appreciated.
There's, there's a lot of questions to be answered and in, in a part-time positions that we're in during the week, trying to do that and do our jobs. And do the personnel stuff in here. It just, two weeks goes by like that. And it's like, oh my God, we haven't got that done yet. Um, and then a whole bunch more has added up, so. We're, I, I would just want to echo, um. What Dave's saying is that, uh, we're trying, and we're trying hard. And, you know, and I'm, didn't have the opportunity, but I'm all done with Mudd's line. I'm done. We're taking up too much time. We're taking time away from the, the, the business of the town. And we've got to move forward. I'm, uh, last time, last meeting was the most. Horrific time I've ever had and I'm not doing it again. Yeah. Someone wants to come at me, come at me. I'm not a dishonest person. And neither are these guys up here. Okay? And, and I, he says, I've said right from beginning, I hate the word transparency because we use it everywhere. That and, um, what's the other one?
Well, I mean, I'll also say this, that I commend each and every one of you for speaking up at the last meeting. That was, to me, that was eye open. But by the same token, if we don't hear it. Hmm. What's going on? I commend you guys all for doing that. Because now everybody has full disclosure.
And, and, and what's, let me ask you what stuff, like, I know people came up to me, some people came up to me after the meeting. Didn't realize what Rusty and I had done. I've received emails from people thanking, uh, us for what we, we've done. Is that the stuff you want to hear from us? You know, I, I don't, you know, it's just, we're trying to, we're, we're trying to make up for stuff that has, has been, hasn't been taken care of in a long time.
All I, all I, all I ask this board to do. If a question is presented.
Yeah.
Get back to them.
Yeah.
Do it in a meeting.
Yeah.
Answer the question. Don't dodge the question. Don't. Listen, months, months go by and there are, there's no closure to that question.
Yeah.
So that leaves you sitting in a state of, hmm. I wonder what they're doing today.
No, and, and you're right, but. That is old business. That's where we should be doing it. And what are we talking about now? That I works program. That, that we could be putting things like that on there, but I guess we're negotiating the price, so that's aside.
I mean, look, I, I want to see this board succeed. I want to see our town prosper. I want to see all of that. What I don't want to see. Is the perception that I have that things are being hidden. You know what I'm saying?
The perception is not real. That's right.
It's, it's, there's nothing being hidden, but thank you. I, I appreciate it.
Even, even when you watch YouTube. I mean, there are things like. It's just not clear and it shouldn't be.
You know what's going to change that, Leo? Town management.
Oh, I don't.
Boy, is it going to be clear. And, and to my, to my fellow charter methods. Um, if I think next time we get together, we should talk about term limits being one term. If there's the town manager, there's no reason to have three terms.
Thursday. Thursday.
Okay, Faith, Faith.
I just have a really quick comment and I haven't been, you know, a regular person, but starting to take more interest. And after your presentation, mine last time, I think maybe you guys kind of get a sense of where we're all at. We, we want to be informed. We want answers. I. You know, I, I commend you for saying that and, um, just keep that in mind. I don't think anybody's. Whatever. I mean, I know this isn't the forum that we're supposed to be doing this, but, you know, as I said before, if you do it for one, you have to do it for all. But I think maybe if you explain to people what this five minutes of, of. Whatever you call it, comments, input. It's not supposed to be for the board to answer. So what is the process? Is it for, for people to say, okay, I put it on the agenda? What, what is the process? Put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Put it on the, just, I think you got to tell people what the, what the procedure is.
And, and I'm working on that. I did research on it.
He's holding it.
Yeah, I'm holding it. And what I learned from other towns is they, mostly every town I, I read about, they do have a five minute of input. But the five minutes, so, and I have it on my, I could, I'm not going to bore you with it. I've, I've downloaded a bunch of them onto the computer. Um, and they have the five minutes of input, but that's all, it all, it's all it is, is you talk to us, we don't answer. We don't answer because if we may not answer correctly, we may not answer illegally, we may answer illegally, okay? So, but we have to find a way to. Turn, go full circle to be able to answer those questions or as a board, or one of the things I've looked at is. Get it on to the agenda for the next week. Come up and sit here in front of us and ask us right face to face.
And I would like to add that we should not be so guarded. We should not have to be so guarded that we can't, or we're nervous to answer. To, to get brought up on charges or to be accused of doing this wrong or doing that wrong. Nobody wants to, to, to deal with that. So I suggest, and it goes for all of us, you know, if we want to be a community, then we're a part of the community, our community. I respect you. I just want to be respected in return.
The hard part is that fine line because if you say something that's not correct, if you're saying it behind that desk, we don't, you know, don't want to be held to say something incorrectly. I get that. I think the agenda.
I think we all get that.
Makes perfect sense.
All we want you to do is get back.
Okay.
That's all we want.
Um, but while we're still way out of whack on, on what we're doing, I just, I, yeah, I just want to bring this up because. Because the last meeting, we missed this and it's from the State Department of Transportation, but who can, is this online?
I scan everything.
Okay, so, so this is online. I'm sorry. So, so this is online, but if, if people can actually, uh, look at it, it, it's, it's, uh. The twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four work plan, which includes all capital projects and programs, maintenance, operation activities. And all DOT planning initiatives. Um, I mean, it's, it's a, it allocates up to five million dollars in, in matching state funds for projects on one or two levels. This is the stuff that we should be going after, you know, um. I know nobody here, it would, I mean, if there's an eighth day, we definitely go after, but it is online. Um, if, if, if you have any suggestions and you read it and, and there's a way to streamline it or if anybody knows more about this. I, I suggest we look into. As, as a community, not as a, not as a board. This is budget season and I'm not going to lie. It's going to be pretty tough to look into this. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, just don't forget Charter. And now ordinance. We throw a novel in there.
Okay, we also. Yes, Jeff.
Is that planning board document, is that public knowledge?
I, I would think so.
No, you're talking about what I just said.
He's talking about the revisions for the ordinance for the planning.
It's their, it's their minutes.
Admittedly, I don't have the intense jobs you. That's, I spent too much.
All right.
That I didn't see.
All right.
I would, I would change.
Can we move on here, please? All right. Yes.
I just don't want you to forget to vote on this last piece that you had.
And there's another vote. There's actually two votes. One, I make a motion that John looks into this DOT. Do I have a second? Anybody?
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
I'm going to start by calling.
One, one other thing is I had conversation with, uh, with Susan Briggs, uh, in regards to the sign, but also in regards to. Property that is very close by. Almost attached to this. Um.
It's very.
And I wanted to see if the board was interested in me following up on any possibility. Of, um, purchasing property. Obviously, it's, it's months and months out. But with the, uh, design up there, I just think it would be a second, uh, option. I, I mean.
Oh, I, I just got one question. Would you consider, is there a consideration to incorporate the building or buildings on said property? Into the town hall expansion plan or?
Or, I, I think it would be in, I, I think it would be in four. One or the other. I, I don't, I don't think.
That would be something that the building committee would look at.
Yes. Bill. But.
I, were you.
After that. My thought, having been an engineer for forty years and having done huge commercial projects. It's not that far from that wall. To the wall of the church.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Well, I know, I'd be surprised, but I don't know how, and I haven't really looked at the expansion plan, but. It would make sense to connect this building to that building so that in the future. Build this expansion that way. And if the gentleman over there still wants to sell the building at some point, it is a historic landmark alive because of the bell. That was what we had discussed. But it just makes sense that we don't just build this addition for the next five years or ten years. We build it for the history. So that we're not doing this again.
Uh, I, I.
Which though. Which.
And I think.
This right, this right here.
Six thousand square feet.
Uh, I understand what you're saying, but you tell Priscilla why she can't have an office right now. Okay? That's the other pressure we're getting.
There's, there's an office right over there in, in that building while you're constructing.
I'd like.
To get from here to there.
Okay, as long as you're thinking along those terms, because if you say you're going to wait five years, she's going to have a fit.
So.
Well, here we go.
That little corner seat with the door, so little red door, that's a wash and dryer room. You can have that right.
Okay, all right, all right. Can we need to move on, please?
So, so can I, do I have the board's permission to, uh, discuss potential. Uh, uh, property purchase. Uh, in regards to the town hall expansion.
And that's a motion.
And that's a motion.
So we have a second?
The building committee is speaking.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'm second now.
All right. Any discussion on it? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Celeste.
I just don't know if you voted on the ordinance review application.
We, we have not.
Okay.
And we, and we are not going to vote on that.
You're not voting to postpone it or to?
Yes, we are postponed.
We tabled it pending legal.
I just was asking if there was a vote on that. I just don't want you to get caught in the, the nusia of, of not doing everything properly.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Don.
Would you please vote or decide what you want to do about the, uh. Proposed zoning amendments proposed by the planning board. You can either table them or.
Don, we haven't even read them. Donna, we haven't even read them.
Okay, so they're.
How, how can we do that without reading? Uh, honestly, I read the charter, uh, changes today, that was my foremost to deal with, and I wanted to spend my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brad.
So on a different note, I want to put everybody's mind at ease that has been calling and complaining to me that the roads are being swept. They are not being swept, any road that's being swept right now is being swept by DOT, that they're a state road. Our roads won't be swept until the eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first.
Did you, was it the Brad, it's okay?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
There's minivan, are you guys in minivan, I was kidding, but on five days in a row, overnight and everything?
Haven't heard a word.
Cause I, I came home at late eleven, and I was there, and my son's like, why is that same minivan there, Dave, it's supposed to. There's a, like a really different looking green minivan that was parked for like five days.
Would you?
Along with that, that place needs to be locked up.
Yeah, it was, it has not.
Would you call tomorrow?
Yes.
Talk to Donna?
Yes.
So that can get entered, and we have a tracking mechanism to make sure it doesn't fall through cracks.
I don't know if it broke down or if someone's living there, I know what happened, the last one was down there.
Yeah, please just call. Take pictures, call.
At any rate, it's the state roads that are being swept, and they happen to be swept by the same contractor that we use. So people are thinking that we are sweeping the road. And we are not.
One more thing, sorry.
I know you want to go ahead, go ahead.
No, it's not. We gotta, we gotta, yeah, we gotta make a session, but Brad, excuse me, Brad, I, I, since you and I talked this week, could you please make a statement and an explanation about the swap shop, please?
Okay, the swap shop is gonna be open starting Saturday and Sunday this week.
Transfer station.
Transfer station.
We are also going to be limiting this year what items go there. Um, so, we're gonna put together a list, and there will also be an attendant that will be looking at anything that comes in, and you can't unload anything before you see an attendant. And if they deem that it is not good for the swap shop, then you'll have to pay to get rid of it or take it home. Uh, we have spent a fortune keeping that place open that people don't realize, in tipping fees and tonnage, that when it doesn't go and it sits outside for a week, and then Morris asks, y'all, the other guys have to pick it up. That costs us employee time, and that costs us tonnage to get rid of it.
Yeah, so, so I asked, I asked him, and said, close for the winter, and everybody was saying, winter's over, so I said, spray paint winter, and just closed. Until you made the announcement that it's opening Saturday, so. But just Saturdays and Sundays.
For now.
For now.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
We all cut up? Well, yes, Paulie.
Um, we need to discuss just a few things about the upcoming election. As you know, I'm gonna be out for surgery, and I was told they want me out for two weeks, not one. But I'm going to come in anyway, so I've got two people coming to help me set up the election room. But what I need from the board, and I want to tell you tonight, we have plenty of time to think about it, is we need a box trailer, so I don't have to rent a U-Haul. Someone that has a trailer that we can park out here to put all these tables, chairs, everything that needs to be taken out of here, so we can set the room up, that's gonna be done, uh, before Monday or early Monday morning. Help do that, get the trailer here and carry the heavy stuff out. I have to have a five-foot circumference around the ABS machine, which is the handicap voting machine. And I had it set up in this corner for the last election, but now that the safe and the copier are here, I can't do that. I'm wondering if, I don't know how high it was, who even moved this safe, but is it possible to get the safe back over there? So that we do have one voter that comes in either a scooter or an electric wheelchair. So he's gotta be able to come in here and maneuver around to get behind this table to use this machine, go over to get his ballot into the machine. And it would be nice if he could go out the back door, but we don't have a ramp there, which we really need to build a ramp. But we'll have to get him to turn around, move everybody out of the way, and send it back out the front door. So, we gotta move this stuff so that I can be compliant with the state's request about five feet around that ABS machine. Uh, the cameras need to be taken down, I spoke to Brendan about doing that, but he said that he needs the order from you guys.
That's not a problem.
So we gotta get the cameras taken down, and also Shirley.
Second across the twenty?
No.
Shirley, the registrar needs to be moved, she can't be in the voting room election day, so.
Got it.
She needs to be put somewhere, and she's gonna be available a week before the election for people to come in. And that's for the June election also. Uh, and then I'll need access to cousin's school, which I know wasn't a problem, but we're gonna have to get all the booths out, either, um, lining up with someone the Friday before or early Monday morning, so I can get all those booths here, so that my work is still, let me get the room set up. And then this is Donna's last meeting with the board, I'm sorry to see Donna go. But we need to have a plan in place, because Donna does a lot of stuff. We gotta figure out who's gonna take the minutes for the next meeting, who's gonna take the next meeting? Who's gonna order supplies until someone is hired, she was on vacation for the week. I needed sheets to print stamps. Nobody else has the authority to order supplies, I was told, so we need to have someone in place to order supplies. Who's gonna post things on the website? Who's gonna answer the phones, the emails, you know, we, we, we better get something put in place on a temporary basis, maybe hire someone temporary, that's done it before or something, until we hire someone full-time? Just my thoughts. I have the warrant, Donna gave me the warrant for the May third election, which I'll give you at the next meeting on the nineteenth. So you can sign that, because I have to attest copies and have it posted around town. And I also have all the appointments for the election workers for that election, that are gonna, you have to vote on the appointments and sign all those appointments. I have those ready for you for the next meeting. Any questions on any of that stuff, gentlemen? Okay, and I wanted to speak a little bit about the last meeting. I watched it from home and I was upset by it. If I misunderstood something, I hope that one of you will, will correct me. But from that meeting, it was my understanding that there had been talk on several occasions between board members about changing my position from elected to appointed. One member of the board explained to the others why he wanted to do it, and why he wanted to push forward. It was suggested that that board member tell the residents why he pushed it through, and that maybe the town clerk should be in front of him when he did it. So I am here. It was also stated that over the past five years, there has been a problem with the town clerk. And that the position needed to be changed from elected to appointed to solve this issue. I didn't realize it was a problem with the town clerk myself. And I don't want the townspeople to think that there is a problem with the town clerk, so I want it out in the open, I have nothing to hide. Why wasn't I told there was a problem so we could resolve it when it happened? And I am curious as to what that problem is. Secondly, when my position becomes appointed in July of two thousand twenty-three, how is the so-called issue gonna be solved? I've heard rumors that there is a board member who wants to get rid of me. I've worked very hard at my job. I was doing my town clerk duties and working as deputy tax collector, assisting with motor vehicle and tax payments for several years. While doing both, it would put me here late nights, so I could get my clerk stuff done, because I was at the counter all day. I was getting tired of all the extra hours, and no extra pay to go along with it, which I've brought up several times. So I started cutting myself back from being at the counter, working as deputy tax collector with the motor vehicle and the tax payments, so I could concentrate on what I had to do as the clerk. And just because I cut back on working at the counter, doing motor vehicle and tax payments, doesn't mean I wasn't working. I worked extra hours above the thirty-seven and a half hours a week, especially during elections. I am also deputy registrar of voters, which takes up time. In two thousand twenty, I worked over two hundred extra hours between July and December on elections. I even opened the town hall on weekends, so people could come in in absence and vote. I've been the town clerk here since two thousand and nine. I was green when I started, I knew absolutely nothing about being a town clerk. Over the years, I took required classes and gained enough points to become certified clerk. The next step I took was to become recertified by taking more classes. Finally, in two thousand nineteen, after ten years of being the clerk, many classes, and being on the Main Town and City Clerks Association's Board of Directors and Vice President of the York County Clerks Association, I reached my goal and obtained my lifetime certified clerk of main title. I am doing my due diligence to keep up on the laws pertaining to every aspect of my job. I don't live in Lyman, but I care about this town. Which is why I went above the clerk duties and I started the Lyman Giving Treaty two thousand fourteen to help those in need. I also set up rabies clinics, because there was a need for that. I feel I have done a good job for this town as your town clerk. So I want to know, is there any truth to comments made at the last meeting? What was the reason given to another board member to pushing through changing my position from elected to appointed? What is the problem with the town clerk? Speak up, let's work it out. How will the issue be resolved when my position becomes appointed? I don't want the townspeople think, thinking that there's a problem with me and the job that I'm doing for them. So I'm here in front of all of you, if you have something to say, you have a concern, please say it now. Dave, you have a problem with me?
No, I don't.
Tom?
No, you and I have had many discussions.
Bill?
You know that there isn't any problem with you doing your job, absolutely none.
I respect what you do.
John? Okay, so there's no problem. What was the reason given to push my position from elected to appointed through? I heard there was talk about that, what was the reason? Nobody?
Before my time.
I'll address that, I was chair of the board at the time. We did both you and the road commissioner for largely the same reasons. It was not an issue with you, it was an issue of succession. We were very fortunate when you were elected to get somebody as dedicated with you as you that took time to do all the classes and go above and beyond. We, we felt the same way about Morris. Morris was retiring anyway, the board at the time felt to do both of them at the same time.
It was said that when my position became appointed, the issue will be resolved. What issue?
Who said that, Paulie?
Two members of the board spoke stating these things, and it was Bill Sigal and Dave House.
Oh, I, I, I would think you're on a card, tops.
Alright. This is, this is why we can't be doing this, okay? You mentioned coverage, you a lot, the raging, I respect that, but finish. Finish. Tell Paulie why. The reason why I said what I said on tape is because of what you've been, Paulie don't know. But it's what you said to me when I first started, what was it? This is coverage, this is your time right now, and then I'm sorry, it's a long way. And this isn't taking a pot shot, I'm not trying to, I, I had no idea this was gonna happen.
I don't know what I said, I don't remember what I said, honest to Christ.
Well, then I suggest that we state it in executive session. If that's even possible.
It's a matter for executive session.
It is not possible because she's elected.
Right.
Right.
And that's up to you and Paulie.
I wouldn't, um, do you have any idea what was said?
Nope, I just listened to the meeting. And it concerned me that the things that I heard, that there's a problem with the town clerk, there was a reason why it was pushed through to change my position from elected to appointed, and the issue will be resolved when I become appointed. So my questions are, what's the problem? What will be resolved, and what was said, what, what is the reason why it was pushed through, if it wasn't other than?
It wasn't, whoa, 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 it wasn't pushed through. It was brought up with a board of five. Five guys agreed unanimously. It went to the townspeople, they voted three to one, Paulie, nothing was pushed.
It wasn't unanimous.
You weren't on the board at the time, you didn't vote for it, were you on the board? That was, the first time you were here was the public.
That was, that was my first.
The thing is, John, is your reason and my reason are two totally different reasons.
I don't believe so.
I believe they're absolutely true. Part of the problem with an elected position, when you're trying to run an organization, an elected person doesn't answer anybody, except for the townspeople. So, a- and this may sound foolish in a way, but just as I give you a first example. We need you to come in and open the town hall today, because nobody else can do it. She can say no. And we, what are we gonna do, there's nothing we can do. And that was just to give you an idea, so when you look at the overall contents, top, context of jobs that were required to oversee, that's a position that we can't really tell them what to do. And that makes it really difficult. And, and, but I will go back and say more, alright? I've always said, Paulie does a great job. But those other issues are hanging out there all the time, and we need to keep things running smooth. Back fifty years ago, there was a real reason the town clerk was elected. Because it was the good old boy syndrome that was going on everywhere, and that was the way to try to stop. But that's, it's not that way anymore, it's very different.
I'm guessing opening the town building is not a big deal.
It's, it's not.
Realistic, I understand.
I, I think, I think, I think the best, the, the best, because it took me a while, it took me a while to, 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 to look at it the way other people were looking at it, and I think the best thing to do is to listen to the charter commission meeting, where it was discussed. That was the most respectful discussion, um, why it was best to have your opposition to continue to be appointed. And I think you should listen to that.
I did listen to that, my question is, what was the reason with some of the members on this board for putting it through?
Well, I think, I think John should be the one to answer that.
I answered it. There was a lot of things, I think I've told you a number of times, Paulie, I respected your work ethic, you're an incredible technician. You and I have had a lot of positive con- conversations. Um, another thing with being elected is, is our negative being elected to appointed is. our negative being elected to appointed is your protection, your personnel records. You're not subject to oh, I can't remember the it's been a while since I've thought about it. Basically, you're not subject to, to minimum wage. You're not subject to the main, to the National Employment Act.
I, I understood all that.
Okay.
I just wanted the comments that were addressed, I want the comments addressed that were made that night. But you're all saying there's no problem, because I don't want anybody being thinking that there's a problem with the town clerk, because I think I do a great job. And there's no issues?
No issues, Stan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No way.
I didn't mean to not answer your question, but Dave's right. That, I, I've been quite a few of the charter commission meetings, and, and I think that they've done an outstanding job. And they did put a lot of thought into things. They didn't just arbitrarily do things, so. If you have the time, that should be online, available, listen to. The experts can show you the right way. Okay? Okay, is there anything else before we go on here? We have to go into an executive session here for a matter.
We, we need to talk to Morris first.
Uh-oh, that's right, okay. All right, Morris, you're up.
Sorry, Morris, I didn't realize it was gonna be this long.
Prefer if you could come up here, Boris.
I got it.
Thank you. You got me beat.
Yeah. All right. Go ahead, talk to me.
So, so if, if we're gonna do this in the open?
Yeah.
I'm gonna be in the open, I mean, I'm gonna.
No, 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 I think he just wants to explain.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Dave's son, um, Morris, I'm sorry, Morrison's son, Dave. Has special, and, and we're trying to accommodate him, whether we have a program or we hire him for a, a, a member, uh, working at the dump. So right now, we're trying to discuss what the best way to do it and have it be not to affect him uh, for his, his state benefits versus making sure that he's um, protected by insurance. So that's the main. That's the conversation.
Yep, that's the conversation.
So.
And I, and I, let, let me interject something here, right?
Go right ahead.
Number one, number one, I don't want this to cost the town anything. Or we work it out. He's been going up there, I thought we were covered under the volunteer insurance policy, right? And he's been going up there for over a year, that almost two years, right? And, and working, and, and, uh, never asked anything from the town for, all right? And I don't expect anything from the town. I want anything from the town. Right, uh? Number two, if you start paying him, right? He loses a dollar for every dollar you paid.
That's right.
For SSI. So it's, so it's not advantage to him to give a, a, any way you look at it. So, and why did, why did the, your insurance company tell you that, that he couldn't be covered underneath the volunteer program?
We don't have insurance for a volunteer program.
Well, you did it one time, because I know.
We were supposed to. It was.
Well, if you look, if you looked at it, you see why we caused the town to do that.
We, we're in the process of doing it. But that was supposed to be put into place. It never was put into place.
It wasn't.
It wasn't. So we talked with, uh, Memick today, our workers' call. And they said if he was not being paid, he cannot be covered under the workers' call.
Yeah.
So we have a call into our liability insurance company. And lady was just getting back from vacation today, expect to hear from her tomorrow. We wanna see what it is, because we, we don't wanna affect his social security. And, but we wanna make sure he's covered under insurance, and that's all we're trying to.
I understand, I understand, Bill, and, and, and I, I commend you guys for being an over bag with to try to resolve the situation. I really appreciate it, I really do, because it does mean a lot to it.
I'm hoping before the week is out, we'll have an answer for you on how to do it.
All right.
Okay?
What do you, I mean, you get any inkling of what, what's, how it's gonna come down, uh?
Well, I'm hoping that they say he can volunteer and he's covered under our liability insurance.
Okay.
And if they say that, I think we're in good shape.
Well, does liability protect him, or does it protect the public?
It's gonna do both ways.
As long as that's on the policy.
Yeah, 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 we'll ma- I'll make sure we ask that, but you know, you know, you go and you ask the questions, and then you come back and talk about it, say, I gotta go ask more questions, you know? And unfortunately, nothing is fast these days. Uh, but yeah, we, we wanna make sure he's covered. We don't wanna affect his SSI, and we just wanna.
I, I can't, I can't affect his SSI, because, because he has some medical issues, and, and, and I, I have to have the insurance covered.
I understand, I understand.
I just can't do that.
Understand, but you know, it, it, it works for us too, to work out something.
No, I understand.
You know, so it's to our benefit also, so that's.
But I, I just, I wanna reiterate again, I, I, I appreciate you gentlemen trying to work this through, because, because it, it does mean a lot to me, really does.
I mean, if you're gonna talk to them anyway, what about, i- is there any, uh, uh, insurance funded, uh, father-son mentor program because of his disability?
What we're asking, is there's any coverage anyway whatsoever? Jessica?
Question, we don't have a volunteer insurance policy?
We do not.
Is that, is something?
No, we did not.
So.
I, I don't mean to be short, we did not.
Okay.
We never have.
And that's fine. Is somebody looking into getting one, since we have a subject, maybe the saws and chainsaws? That just worries me, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'll put it on my to-do list.
I'm not looking to do more to do, but that's terrifying to me.
I, I, I agree with you, um, I, I'm thinking it was five years ago that was supposed to be put into effect, never got done.
Okay.
And we, and, and we only found out recently.
Yeah, I just am looking for volunteers with saws that are willing to climb trees.
Well, I agree, I agree, you know?
And the problem is?
Well, I think back when that was going in, volunteer insurance was three dollars a year per person.
Right.
It was stupid. You know?
Too bad, hopefully.
So.
Do you think you have an answer by this weekend?
I'm hoping.
I'm going back to work tomorrow.
What's that?
I'm going back to work tomorrow.
I understand.
And I'm not taking it in my own.
No, please wait.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna sneak out, maybe one of.
Yeah. But I'll try to get back before the weekend.
Really, see if you can, yeah.
Yeah, I'll hopefully, we'll know tomorrow.
All right.
Thanks, Boris.
I just say what a difference this meeting has been. It's nice to see, this is what I expect as the town to do.
Sleep with your boss.
Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you. It's nice to hear something positive. Rusty, can you, anybody? Read the, yeah, the bottom.
All right, make a motion, uh, we go into executive session to discuss Title I, MRSA Section four oh five six C, reason real of personal property attached to real property or interest therein in premature closure with prejustice competition bargaining position of municipal.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
We're gonna begin the discussion afterwards.
No.
What did you think of all aspects?
I should, I just have. I don't know.
No, really.
I'm sorry, I wish I could give you more definitive.